Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Selectmen's Meeting for Thursday, December 19th, and wish you all, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the town staff, a very happy holidays and a very Merry Christmas. In that spirit, I'm going to keep this holiday spirit short. You know, it's like going to church with a short sermon. You always show up. So that's the way we'd like to make tonight go. I'm going to ask our TV director, Bob Fortier, if he would be so kind as to show the folks at home a picture of Santa Claus who came to Hingham recently. That's a painting that will now be hanging in the Treasurer Collector's office on the first floor. And it was performed by Jackie Burrard, who is a member of the staff. And I happened to see it this afternoon, and I thought that expressed better than any of us could, the spirit of the season. And it's very well done, as you can see. And he's watching us, so we will be more nice than naughty this evening. Is that the clue? Everybody got that? Okay, we're all set.
Game plan.
Tonight's meeting is the third and final of our budget hearings. That will be the principal agenda for tonight. We'll be dealing with the assessors, Elder Services, the Fire Department, South Shore Country Club, the Selectment Administrative Legal Offices, and the South Shore Center. So with that, I'll entertain a motion. If there's any corrections to the December 5th minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good, we're on schedule. Okay. Let's do it. Mr. Nolan is here from the Assessor's Office. Rick, come on down, as they used to say. Rick Nolan, the Town Assessor.
The Assessor's Budget is on page 10.
Page 10.
If you want to look at the summary.
Okay.
It is on page...
Thirty?
Eight.
Page eight.
Page eight.
Roman numeral eight.
The Assessor's Budget is relatively straightforward. The department request was $299,579, with an additional request for $45,000. And my recommendation for you is the entire department request of $299,579, with an additional of $25,000, which I'm hoping is a little bit more targeted towards the specific properties that we want to begin doing some revaluation work. I've asked Rick to get some prices. And overall, it's a 9.6 percent increase, but I'll let Rick talk a little bit more for you about the additional work.
All right. The stage is yours.
Thank you very much. Good evening. As Ted says, we're pretty much a level-funded budget, except for the contractual requirements for the salaries, which increased 3.6 percent. Our excesses expenses for the office supplies everything is $11,587, which is level-funded. The revaluation is level-funded at $69,800. We are in the middle of the RFP process, so we don't know exactly what the fiscal '15 revaluation figure will be. In fiscal '14, we paid Vision and RRC, which is our personal property carrier, already leaving a balance of $22,000 for all our inspections for the balance of fiscal '14, which I have projected for commercial cyclical inspections, $7,000, pertinent inspections, $15,000, which pretty much wipes out our entire budget for the inspections. Mapping, $6,000 for COLA will be paid. And as Ted said, we had originally requested $45,000. But we want to remind everybody, assessors is charged with assessing all property to full market value. We assess over $5 billion in rail and personal property, which equals almost $70 million in tax dollars. In fiscal '14, we had over $95 million in growth, which equaled about $1.16 million in tax dollars. So the reason for the additional request is twofold. The Board of Assessors and the Board of Selectmen have shown concern about the commercial industrial values of some of the larger properties. The Board of Assessors voted to have appraisals on two of our highest-assessed properties, Derby Shops and Linden Ponds. We have written proposals for appraisals, Derby between $12,000 and $14,000, and Linden Ponds, $22,000 to $24,000. In addition, we would like funds for additional inspections. It is vital we continue to inspect properties for permits and cyclical purposes. Without these inspections, we'd be unable to assess new growth and properly assess all properties. Prior to 2011, we had a staff of seven with two inspectors. We were doing everything in-house, except for personal property. We now have two full-time and two part-time positions, but no inspectors. We now outsource every evaluation and majority of inspections. The system is working. But to properly assess all properties to keep it up-to-date, it's important that we keep doing additional inspections.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Just to remind everybody, when you were here in November, where we talked about the tax rate, which has been established at $12.56 per thousand. The concern that was expressed by this board was that the commercial portion of the revenue was going down, if you will, and meaning that the residents were paying more. And that obviously reflects the fact that residential values are increasing faster than commercial values. And the formula for assessing is different for each area. And I think your recommendation, that's the reason, I believe, for your recommendation this year to go out and just validate those evaluations.
Right.
Is that saying... Okay. Okay. Mr. Healy?
No, I have nothing. I like the idea of keeping Derby Street Shops honest. I think that's a great idea, so...
All right. Okay. Christmas. Irma?
First, Rick, thank you for the work that you and your staff does, and for the Board of Assessors. I think it's a very good group.
Thank you.
I'm concerned that the town administrator is not supporting more than $25,000 of the 45, not knowing what you're going to be facing in the coming year. I'd rather see it higher, and if you don't use it, you don't use it, and it comes back. And this is very small money. So I really would rather see the 45 in there. And if something happens where you've got to do more of the appraisals and the assessment, and especially of the commercial property, to Bruce's point, that... And maybe the bids will come back lower. But, you know, otherwise, we're going to see you in for a reserve fund transfer, and that's not real fun either. So I'd rather see your budget request, the number that you ask for be given to you, or something very close to it.
I'll ask the town administrator, because you took your first adjustment at this. So I'd like to hear your rationale.
Well, I asked Rick to go out and get some prices. We got a price... We got a series of prices from one contractor. Generally speaking, when we go out to competitive bids, we see the prices go even further down. And as he indicated to you, I think it was $12,000 to $14,000 for Derby Street Shops. You know, that leaves another $12,000 to $13,000 for other commercial properties within town for specialized targeted review, as opposed to the general review we do through the Assessor's Office. And I think that would be sufficient to, you know, tackle a couple of these each year. As you go through all the budget requests, I don't think there's one department that made a budget request that doesn't have a compelling case. But the reality is, we just can't give everything to everybody that asks for it. I'll remind you that we haven't yet seen the school budget yet, either. And at the end of the day, we've got to put this all together. So this budget includes $320,000 of additional requests. So sooner or later, we're going to have to parse where we're going to do, make some reductions.
Well, and thank you. Thank you for that. And we'll have an opportunity... January 2nd is our next Selectmen's Meeting. I forgot to mention that at the beginning. And that's where we'll have an opportunity to assess all of it to the conclusion. Our hearing tonight is really just to understand your need. And do you think 25 will do it?
I think so, because I'd like to get the Derby Street appraised.
The most important, right?
And that would leave us some funds, if we needed for additional, either for the revale, if it comes in a little bit higher, which we don't know yet, and also for some inspections. And then we could look at Linden Ponds for the following year. So I would say 25 would be more than acceptable for us.
Why wouldn't you look at Linden Ponds this year?
Well, one reason, we're in the revale, and we're not going to be really looking at it till the fall, probably, you know? So I would think that we could do it for later in the year.
And I think Linden Ponds may, and I'll say "may," be in discussion as to Erickson's future, as to what they intend to do there.
Right.
I mean, there's a lot of rumor, but not... I haven't heard anybody come to us.
Well, I can give you a little bit of a brief update, because I met with the executive director this week up there. And they're looking at the tail end of '14 to beginning pulling permits for the end of their second phase. And then couldn't give me a definitive of when they're going to begin their third campus. But their second phase includes two buildings. So, you know, they're going to be, you know, in that process towards the tail end of next year, which is going to change their overall assessment instantly.
Okay.
We are planning to go up to Linden Ponds and review the whole property. Anyway, Vision and I, we already made a plan to do that, so...
Go ahead.
We're just leaving it alone. We are going to work on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a very important thing to note here. These are specialized. Now, Rick's going to do this with every single property in town. These are targeted appraisals for properties that we think, you know, might be in an abatement application. We might have to defend our assessment. We want to make sure we get it right, because there's a little more risk also with the larger ones. If you don't get it right, the financial effect of the town through the abatement process, reduced tax revenue, is substantial.
Okay. Good. Any questions from the audience? There being none, Merry Christmas, Rick.
Same to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Elder Services.
The detail appears on page...
Page 103, for detail.
103, and the summary is on page 12. Roman numeral 12. Barbara? The department requested $277,154 with an additional request of $3,454 for additional hours for one of their drivers. Barbara, we'll go into more detail on that with you. Overall, the department request is $280,608, and it's a 2.23 percent increase year to year.
Great. Before we start, I'd like to introduce a couple of members of the Council on Aging that are here. Kristin Gregoire, who's the chairman, Don Sibber, who's new to the council this year, June Friedman, and Dick Pot, who actually chairs the Facility Subcommittee.
Thank you. Welcome.
Basically, as Ted explained, it's a pretty much a level services budget. And the one increase that we are asking for this year is in the driver's salaries. We currently have two part-time drivers budgeted for a total of 25 hours a week. And those two drivers are dedicated strictly to medical transportation. And currently, we provide medical transportation Tuesday through Fridays. And the request for this is to add Mondays to that schedule to round it out to a full five-day-a-week operation for medical transportation. The remaining transportation that we do is actually done by all volunteers for shopping, going to the library, coming to the senior center, errands around town, and specialized trips. And it's just the medical transportation that we have paid staff for.
Okay. The weekends are covered by the...
We don't do weekend transportation at this point.
Okay, so it's just for scheduled appointments?
Just for scheduled.
Not emergencies, right? Okay, just to make that clear.
Correct. And even if somebody calls with an emergency, we tell them to call 911.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Barbara. Irma?
No, I think it's great. I think that's all you need. I was kind of assuming with the growing population might be asking for a little bit more.
I think what's happened is, based on the needs assessment last year, the Council on Aging is actually in the process of starting the revision of its strategic plan. And you were part of that, but we...
It was great sessions.
...held two focus groups in October, one with some general public agency people that we work with and constituents, and then one with the staff and the council members. And Irma attended that one as our liaison and began the whole swap process, and also relooking at our mission and our vision and our values. Some of the things that came up during then, and I will alert that to you, some of the shortcomings that we're starting to see in the department is particularly around staffing, that we keep growing. The numbers of elders are growing, and our staffing is the same as it was 10 years ago. It's not grown, it's not changed. But that's something that they really want to take a look at and start to address during the strategic planning process versus coming forth with some requests at this point in time. And then the other issue that we face is if we came forth with requests for more staffing, where are we going to put them at this point? That's an issue that we need to think about, so...
Good point.
That's why we didn't bring that forth this year.
Okay. Very good. Paul?
I don't have any other questions. I thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? I'm always going to be sick for these kind of meetings.
Good job.
Good job.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Barbara. Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
It feels nice being on right before the holidays.
Yeah, that's what I like to do. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Fire Department request. And I'll invite the chief and the deputy chief.
Well, the chief and the deputy chief are coming up here. Your summary budget appears on page nine, Roman numeral nine.
And the detail is on page 60.
Give you a brief overview. The department requested $4,787,852 with their base request, and an additional $26,129 in salary and $1,950 in expenses. The salary reflects the additional hiring of additional personnel, offset by reductions in overtime. For a total budget request that I'm going to recommend to you of $4,816,431, it represents a 2.61 percent increase year over year.
Okay.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman, as I traditionally do with the budget presentation we do before the Selectmen, I'd like to start with an overview of what some of the major points that took place over the year. As you are aware, it's not often that the Fire Department is before the Board of Selectmen, and that's just the way I like it. But I do think that it's good education for the community and you yourself to sometimes hear about some of the things that you don't normally hear about. Again, I can't thank the deputy fire chief, who really is the budget crunching numbers person, for his fine work in doing this. I couldn't do it without him. We're very... I took a course quite a few years ago at the Kennedy School of Government about how important it is dealing specifically with the Fire Department, and how important it is that the chief and the deputy chief, whether they are, work together and be able to combine strong points with weak points. And his strong points are in the budget area, and he loves doing it. And I love him doing it. And my strong points are in other areas. So we really have a great relationship. But the budget is his foray, as much as anyone's. We put two of our ambulances in service earlier this year in early summer. I'm sure you're aware of that. Through a grant, we recently purchased an all-terrain vehicle, which is a small, little four-wheel-drive open vehicle, 20 horsepower motor. We did that with a grant and some assistance from the Hingham Police, particularly Chris Phillips. We're going to be using it in things like the road race, fireworks, areas that we can't get even our pickup truck in, Wampertuck State Park. Unfortunately, the vehicle isn't registered yet. We expect to have that happen in the next week or two, but we had a need for it a couple of weeks ago during a road race, when it was... During a running race, rather, when it was very wet. So we're really excited about that. We are paying close attention to what's going on in the Fort and in the town forests. I'm sure you were aware, and the work has begun up there. I was up there Monday, I believe it was, with Jeff Androhan. Two firefighter paramedics graduated from the Mass Fire Academy, one in the spring and one in the summer. They're currently on the... Working at the department now and in the Manning Count. We're in the process of hiring two additional firefighters. The paperwork's being done. They're not expected to go to the Mass Fire Academy until May, and they won't be online until probably September, October, which may be an issue that we'll address later on in the budget process. I'm comfortable right now with where my expense budget is. Very comfortable with where it was right now. As you know, that can change very quickly. But we're in good shape with expenses. Promoted a new captain earlier in the year, Steve Murphy. This is a hot ticket item for Bruce, and rightfully so. We do continue to size the fire alarm system down, Bruce. Ten more fire alarm boxes.
I'm not leaving till it's done, you know?
Well, that's a deal. And I'll tell them to stop putting them back in then. It is going slower than I anticipated, but we're getting there. And unfortunately, and I know you're aware of our overtime issue, removing that from service impacts overtime, so... But we're getting there. We became a heart-safe community not too long ago through the efforts of several people, including the deputy. We're very pleased with the progress that's being made on the Fort Town Dispatch Center. I do believe we're on the downhill side of the curve. I'm quite confident we are. As part of that, Fort Town Dispatch Center, we developed a plan for Wampertuck State Park that involves Hingham, Hull, Coasseton, and Noel for any serious incidents that happen up there, especially fires. If you recall back in early spring, it was an extremely, extremely dry spring. And based on a plan that Plum Fire developed with their surrounding partners, we kind of copied it. And in the event that there's a major brush fire in Wampertuck now, Hingham, Hull, Coasseton, and Noel immediately dispatch equipment to that scene. So we use the term "hit it hard and hit it fast", and that allows us to do it. And having all that equipment dispatched out of one center really makes a big difference, because when that happens, they can just push a series of three or four buttons, if that's the case, and in one dispatch, everybody's moving. Big, big, big advantage. We haven't exercised it yet, and I hope we never will, but it's there. I am very pleased with the response that the town had to the two major weather events we had in February or March. I will tell you that in that February storm in all my years of service, me and the deputy went out about 1:30 in the morning. That was the worst weather conditions I had ever been in, including hurricanes and everything else. It was really, really, really dicey. And your other town departments did a great job, like the department police. It was one of the few times, or perhaps the only time, since I've been even involved with anything to do with public safety, where consideration may have been, may should have been given, to pulling people off the road. It was that hairy out there. There was trees coming down everywhere. At one point in time, we were coming up on Hull Street. And other than knowing we were on Hull Street, we didn't know where we were. That's how hot it was. And that includes me being out in a blizzard of 78 and several other events. So the town did a wonderful job. I know that was quite a while ago, but I think it is mentioning. I'd like to compliment all my own people, the firefighters, the fire attendants that go the extra mile within the department, that do projects, build things for the station, repair stuff in the station that we don't... So that we don't have to hire out to have things done. Frequently, I have people come to me, "Chief, can we do this? Can we do that?" And that saves the town a considerable amount of money, because many, many times, we're using their talent, whether they're electricians, or carpenters, or mechanics, or whatever, at just the cost of materials. So the town makes very well on that. As you are aware, we are very concerned about the conditions of our sub-fire stations, the two outside stations. The Asset Committee is continuing to meet. I presume they will have a report probably sometime in January. It's a great committee. They are recommending we purchase two fire trucks, among other things. I believe they're going to recommend that we go forward with station renovations. And it's my opinion that they will more than likely recommend consideration at some point in the future of a fourth fire station to reduce response times. Interestingly enough, there was a committee established in 1967 and gave their report to the 1968 town meeting saying that we need to do that, that a station is needed in the south... The far south part of town. And I think we're fastly approaching that. Tax work-off program continues to work great for us. And the only other thing I'd like to talk about, and that's reflected in some of these budget numbers, is I'm still concerned about burnout. And without going into too much detail, I'm more concerned now than I have been in a long time. So some of the issues that we're going to talk about in the Manning... In the staffing room, hopefully, we'll address that. One thing on a sad note, Noel Fire had a 56-year-old member of the department very well liked firefighter retire in July, and he died earlier this week. His name was Steve Jackman. Hingham firefighters, both on Friday and Saturday, will be covering Noel Firehouses for quite a bit of the day so that the Noel Fire Department can deal with that. But it's credit to the Hingham guys that are willing to do that. And it's a... It wasn't... Not a service for a light of death, but just a kind of a sad time of Christmas. And we were a little bit concerned with everybody's... Everybody being so busy during the holidays, whether we'd be able to get personnel to staff those positions for Noel. And we had people jump in at the opportunity. So that's a credit to your firefighters. And with that, I'm not exactly sure where you want to start, Mr. Ruffo. We are requesting three additional men this year for several different reasons. Primary among them is to cut our overtime account from, it's sometimes as much as $700,000, down considerably. Last year, I had to come in and ask for over $100,000... Over $100,000. I think it was close to $125,000 in reserve fund transfers. Hopefully, with the addition of these three men and maybe some, a little bit additional staffing in the future, we can prevent that. One huge problem that we have right now, and this doesn't necessarily reflect it, is that it's six to nine months to get a candidate into the Mass Fire Academy currently. They have made significant improvements over the last six months that basically it was a year to get someone in. Now it's six to nine months, but that's still a long time. So even if we do add these three firefighters, we won't be hiring until July. We may not get into an academy until September, and we may not see, if they are approved, we may not see them on the line for anywhere from 12 to 14 months from today. So we'll reduce our overtime and hopefully reduce the number of times we have to come in here and ask for those reserve fund transfers. We're in a very unique position in the Fire Department because there are several mandates that we, you will want us to meet, and there's several mandates that we have to meet. One of them is that we need to run three fire stations. And your kind of, your mandate is, and appropriately so, that there be a fire engine in each one of those stations. And you've also requested upon me to make sure we always have two ambulances in service. So in order to do that, I need a minimum number of people on duty, which is 11. When I took over as chief in 2005, we had 14 people per shift covering 11 positions. Due to budget cuts, we now have 12 people covering 11 positions. Fortunately, there were no layoffs when people, when jobs were eliminated. But our window to fill positions during vacation, sick leave, training exercises, et cetera, is extremely limited, and that's why our overtime is so high. So having these three people, these three additional men, will help us there. It will give us better rotation of personnel, which we need to do. Again, it'll give us better rotation of our burnout, of burnout issues, which I'm very, very concerned about. And I went through an era within the department when chief officers refused to acknowledge that burnout even existed. And I learned, fortunately, I wasn't involved with the burnout issue personally, but I learned a very valuable lesson there, and we can't afford to have that. It'll allow us, the three people allow us extra flexibility in special projects. It'll allow us to add shift strength at different times. So at times, we will have 12 people on duty, maybe even 13. It better supports the team concept that firefighters use. We're not like, and don't take this the wrong way, we're not like the police departments where there's a lot of one-on-one relationships between citizens and residents and incidents. We do things in firefighting teams. And the team, the team concept works great in our two sub-stations, but because the budget cuts were light, were very light on the team concept out of headquarters, where many times there's only two people there to assist or available to go on calls. Better flexibility during times of multiple incidents. We have, the deputy has pointed out, is we have new software as a result of things that have been done on the Shrek that gives us much better incident data on what we do, when we do it, and how that impacts other things. And one of the things he just discovered recently, because he's a computer geek, and I'm not, that 30% of the time, when we're on an emergency call in Hingham, there's two calls pending, not pending, but there's two calls working. So thinking that each call is going to, basically, if it's a medical call or a routine incident, it's tying up one station, there's two stations that are not, there's now two stations that are not available to go on a call. And having that extra man, and most of the time, it's the outside stations that are in that position. So having that extra man at headquarters is really important to us. We have a brush fire unit, if you're aware. Many times, we have to take the Quinn out of service to send that unit to a fire, or dump the station completely to send that unit to a fire. The third man will eliminate that. It'll also free up the shift commander to do more staff, administrative staff duties, rather than doing a lot of running around because we don't have that extra person there. I'm extremely reluctant, or actually, I will not run a fire truck with one man on it. Your mandate to me is to three stations, three engines, or three firefighting units, two ambulances. And my mandate to my people is I will not run a fire engine with less than two people on it. Accepted standards throughout the country, NFPA, the union, everyone is, a fire truck should have four people on it. I'm comfortable with three. Through efforts of the, the way we work with the union, which is very cooperative, and staffing engines with the ambulances and vice versa, we have a very, very good arrangement in Hingham. But I would allow trucks to go out the door with one person on it. So that's the reason for the request for three additional people. Now, if you look at your budget sheet, actually, I'm going to let the deputy cover this. He does a little bit better job, and I'm sure he can explain it better than I can. Why don't you just go over this, especially that figure there?
You're going to want to look at your detailed page for this. Betty, what page was that again?
Page 60.
Okay.
Yeah, there's two different lists that are there. One is under 2015 department request is what it would cost the department to maintain the current level of service at 12 men per shift. And the 2015 additional is what it would take to add three more personnel so that our shift strength would actually be 12.75 per shift. Three of our shifts would run at 13, and one shift would run at 12. And, you know, why did we pick three people? I think that you have a graph somewhere where we did an analysis of the overtime cost and the cost of additional personnel to try to find out kind of where the happy medium is, where it's most cost-effective for Department Manning to be.
Bob, we have an attachment that we can put up on the screen?
Sure.
If you would. Sure. Thank you. Thanks.
Pretty cool.
So in doing this analysis, it became pretty obvious to us that where the overtime cost meets the increased Manning cost is about 12.75 people per shift, and that's why we picked the additional three personnel. It also makes funding this a little bit easier. It's only $26,000 additional dollars to the department budget over the initial cost for the 12 men because of the reduction in overtime Manning. As you look at that graph, it's pretty obvious that when the shift Manning moves towards 11, the increased cost to maintain services goes up considerably. So that's kind of a visual justification of where we are.
Two questions, if I may, and they're points of clarification for me before I turn it over to my... There's been some discussion last week. We talked about the dispatch center budget and the software. Bob, Mark, you referenced that in your comments about how you can get that. I'm getting ready for a meeting with my fellow selectmen, and one of the issues I hear that's on the table is new software for the department. Are you happy with the software?
We're happy with the software. You have to understand, Bruce, that the software we used to use, I can't think of the name of the company, and I don't think it would be fair to mention it anyways, but we got better statistics using an Abacus than we did with the software that we had. It was, it was that bad. And one of the, one of the problems, and somewhat in fairness to the company, is the town chose never to do any updates on it. But it basically, if we, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't tell how many incidents we had on Main Street. We couldn't tell how many incidents.
Now, Mark, I'm just asking about the new software.
We're happy with the new software.
You don't think we need any additions?
I don't believe we do. It was a huge improvement from what we had. We made a very huge effort to learn it. And I'm very, I have a huge concern, Bruce, in that if we have to go to another new software program, that it's going to, there's going to be a horrendous learning curve. There's going to be an expense, an overtime expense, again, for us to learn it. We're happy with it.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to, and I gave, I had asked our human resources director to put together, you had mentioned to me in passing, a concern you had about the number of shift days that you're using.
Yep.
And I was surprised when I saw it that I only have it through the first six months, but that the, we're on a course. That's the highest number of six days since 2008. And I don't know what the cause of that is, and I understand your, the nature of the shift where if someone is out for a day, it's really, the impact could be three shifts because of the 20.
In fire terms, it's two shifts, but...
So there's a hit for that. So is there any explanation for why that, I mean, your, the rate is considerably higher than any of the other town departments, and that's always been an interest to me?
Well, one of the, one of the issues is the amount of sick leave that firefighters receive is significantly higher. Firefighters receive 180 hours of sick leave a year. All other town employees get 120. So it's a benefit that they're receiving that's significantly higher than the average town employee. As a matter of fact, I believe in the town employee that works in town hall, working seven and a half hours a day versus eight, gets 112 hours of...
105.
105. A DPW employee gets 120. Firefighters get 180 hours of sick leave a year. So...
I understand the numbers. I just want to know why the trend.
Because I don't have a good, I don't have a completely great answer for you. We're watching it very closely. I just sent letters out. I've got an issue coming up that I'm not able to discuss that we're going to deal with an individual, but it's a, it's a benefit that they get that no one else does, and they take advantage of.
One of the things that's important to know is because of the 24-hour shift, firefighters work, what, seven days a month?
Seven and a half days.
Seven and a half days a month. So if they take a sick day, unlike all the other town employees that take eight-hour sick day or seven-hour sick day, they take a 24-hour sick day. And we had discussed in the contract negotiations last time, structuring that so they could take less than that, but we weren't able to move that through in the negotiations. But I don't think that speaks to the issue. That just speaks to the quantity. Doesn't speak to the issue of, you know, higher sick leave usage this year, although I will point out that it is a little cyclical. So...
Well, as I said, we're on a, we're on a course for 280 hours this year.
That's if you extrapolate evenly, though. But I think if you look in the past, it doesn't extrapolate evenly.
Well, all I know is the numbers that you gave me. So 280.
That figure can also get skewed, get skewed, Bruce, but right now, I have a person that's legitimately on sick leave.
I'm assuming all six.
For seven months, so...
One of the issues that you heard and discussed last year in your budget cycle regarding overtime and why the Fire Department had such a higher usage of overtime last year than they've had in the past. And the Fire Department has been really one of the great departments to, even if they have it, they don't use it unless they need to. But they had a couple of injuries, and that will drive their costs up. And they had really good experience for a few years, so...
No, that's true. I mean, this is a number that we haven't seen in a long time, and I was just concerned for the change in trend, that's all to that point. Okay, let's see. Paul, it's your turn.
Good to see you again, gentlemen. I was impressed with your comparison to the '78 Blizzard as I worked at myself as a police officer. That was pretty hairy to me.
We were elsewhere.
I remember paths crossing several times that night.
Yes, yes. I have a question with respect to the new construction down at the shipyard and perhaps at Linden Ponds. Do you feel that the existing equipment available to you is adequate to address a major fire at either one of those locations? And if not, what are you doing about it?
Well, the buildings are all built of wood, which means they burn. And they burn. When they do catch on fire, they burn fast. I do think there's been a change in the thinking in building construction that when buildings burn like that, some of the, some of the people that recommend those type of projects, just write the building off and build a, build a new one. All the buildings have sprinkler systems in them. They all have fire alarm systems in them. So generally speaking, when you do have a fire, you know, people get out and get out quick, which is very important. We had a fire today, as a matter of fact, in a single-family dwelling, Paul. And fortunately, and many, many times, I can't tell you how many times I go to a fires and there's a delayed alarm, the people try to put the fire themselves. That did not happen in this case. It was an elderly couple. They called us immediately. It was an area that was 3,000 feet to the hydrant, so we were able to jump right on it. I'm not sure that any department, you know, where do you draw the line on what, on what an adequate amount of fire protection is? Can we get in there, make quick rescues, call for help? Yes. But if you had a major fire over there, we could lose several buildings.
Could, can the ladder reach?
Yes.
The top heights of those buildings?
Yes, yes. The 100-foot ladder, and it will reach those. I think the maximum height in the shipyard is five stories. The maximum height at Linden Ponds is 69 feet, I believe. There are some buildings there that are six stories in the front, seven stories in the rear. We did have a fire several years ago at Linden Ponds on a deck. One of the big issues that we've had, that the Fire Service has experienced with the type of construction that we have in the shipyard, and I don't know if it was by design or by chance, but there were an awful lot of those fires. I think there was one in Georgetown. There was one where a similar facility basically burned flat. There was one at Danvers. There was one in Bryantree where malt fires started on the outside of the building and went up the outside. The problem with that is that by the time the fire gets in the building, it's all along the sprinkler system. If you get down the shipyard, you're going to find that the first two to three feet of almost every building down there is concrete. And again, I'm not even sure if that, whether that was by design or not, but that's significantly reduced the issues with malt fires going into those types of buildings. Quincy had an incident a couple of years ago. There was a fatality as a result of that type of fire. But with early, with early warning and the mutual aid that we have, we can, hopefully can get in there. I mean, you know...
Okay. I just have a couple more questions, if I could. I was talking to Mike Perino two days ago, and we were talking about the relatively young age of the police officers on the department as a reason that their sick time is under control. Is that, is some of this sick leave attributable just to an older population of firefighter?
No.
Okay. Well, let me move on then.
I don't believe it is. No.
In terms of an anticipated need for expansion in the fire mission, I would invite you to join this committee that we've recently established up in South Hingham to study the Derby Street Card.
It is my intention to...
Good, thank you.
At least, at least attend the meetings.
We'll, we'll let you know, and definitely welcome you to come and...
I don't want to say too much about it because I don't think it's fair to the asset committee, or the committee that's studying the Fire Department, to report on what they're going to report. We need to get their report out. And then I, and I also have my own opinions on it, just as a professional fire chief, regardless of where the committee goes, and it's a very good committee. We really need to consider that for a firehouse, just to reduce response times. Just to give you...
Has, has the calls for service ticked up progressively?
Very much so, very much so. And again, that's something that this new software has allowed us to track. The town's divided into six geograph, basically, six geographical districts. And we track where the calls are in six geographical districts. And if you look at five of them, the line, we, the total increase in run volume for the department per year is about 5%. Some years, you go up 10. Another year, you make it down three. But we're going up about, our call volume's going up about 5% a year. So if you look at five of these six districts, the number reflects that 5%. If you look at District 2, which is the district in the far end of town, that number is considerably higher.
Which end?
The south end.
Okay.
If you actually look at those districts, the increased amount of runs is a relatively flat slope for districts, all except for District 2. If you look at District 2, District 2 has a very positive slope, which is the southernmost district. It's obvious from, from those run statistics over the last two years that that is the area in town where we're seeing an increased number of responses versus the other five districts in the town.
Are those ambulance runs to Linden Ponds, or are they some other?
They're, they're all different types. Ambulance runs make up about 50% of what we do, and the others are other runs.
We're seeing our ambulance calls to Linden Ponds actually taking a slight dip in recent, in probably the last 12 to 14 months because they're handling a few, a little, a few more of them on their own. And so that, the number of calls that are going to Linden Ponds is still significant, but it's gone down, it's gone down a little bit. If you think back to 1942, when the, when the three stations, we went from five stations to three stations. And in 1942, the town occupied three stations based on population. Population of the town in 1942, I believe, was around 8,000 people. There were 25,000 people that worked in the shipyard alone during the war. So when the stations were located then, and two of them are still in very, all three of them are actually in very good locations, 90% of the town, maybe even 95% of the town, lived south of Gardner Street, okay? And if you went beyond Gardner Street, you know, there probably weren't 100 residences up there. Now all the building is going on in the south end of town, so that's the increase. I'm not sure if it was Monday or Tuesday. We had, granted, it's Christmas time, but Monday, I think it was Monday, we had, just during the first eight hours of the eight-hour tour of the day, we went to the Jibby Shops three times for calls.
Actual eight?
You know, I'm not sure what they were. I wasn't, I wasn't paying attention. We're doing anywhere from 10 to 15. There was a time when I was aware of every call that went out, where it was, what it involved, but that was in the days when we were doing two or three calls a day. Now we're doing 15 and sometimes 20, so I don't track them anymore, but...
Let me, let me just finish with a question. This software that you're using now, is it compatible with the police? And is the software that you're using compatible with the other towns within the grid?
All four towns, if I'm not mistaken, are using the same software.
If I, yeah, if I can speak to that.
Four fire departments.
It's, it's a little bit confusing in the, in the question because there are three, three different uses of the software that is out there right now. And you have to break it into its three different components. There's a record management system for the police. There's a record management system for the Fire Department. And then there's the computer-rated dispatch program, which feeds information to those record management systems.
Okay.
Currently, the program that we're using in CAD for the computer-rated dispatch is the same program the police are using for record management system. The Fire Service uses a different software package for its record management system. So that CAD program feeds this other firebase program that the Fire Departments are using. And we did that because in our initial evaluation of those systems, the money, bad thing to say, but the money's always on the police side. So the software developers are always...
Why is that a bad thing to say?
Well, because of the grants. Because of the grants. It's, so the software developers are usually making packages for dispatch that integrate very well on the police side, and the fire side is somewhat lacking. All, all the fire programs will do the MIFERS, which is the MAPS. All the fire programs will do the MIFERS, which is the Mass Fire Reporting System, they'll all do that, but they don't do other things like inventory maintenance, hydrants, inspections, and things that the fire department does which are different. So we bought a separate program, all four fire departments decided that we want a software program that will answer our record management needs.
Are you able to use any of the service call history for purposes of analysis with respect to manpower deployment or people-power deployment?
Yeah, I mean, the software that we're using right now for our record management, we can back it up by using the same data mining in the CAD program that we do in the firehouse program that we use. But the variables that we're allowed to use in the firehouse program let us look for specific things that we couldn't do with our older software. It's been two years of using this new software, I'm still at it, because like the chief said, I'm the geek. So I'm still learning ways to use the software to extract information that helps us in our decision-making process, both in terms of manpower needs by looking at how many times we have overlapping calls at the same time. This, our software package for record management allows us to find out what that number is.
One of the other factors here too, Paul, is when, you've got to think now, I mean, the design and thinking of the Shrek is back over five years. And when we were looking at software packages back in 2008, 2009, we were looking at a company that a couple of the other towns were using, especially on the police side, and the price was a half a million dollars, $500,000, to do the four towns. And the company that we were looking at at that time adamantly, adamantly refused to write a translation package that would allow the fire departments to have a good software package. Just like the deputy said, the companies go out there, they design a package that works for the police department, and then they say to their engineers, well, do something to make it work so that the fire departments can have something. And that was the attitude, and it still is with a lot of these vendors. We did find a vendor that didn't want $500,000. They only wanted $250,000, and they willingly agreed to work with another vendor that would write, that has a good working fire department software package. That's the one we're using now, and it's working fine. Since that's happened, that initial company that wanted the half a million dollars, all of a sudden now is realized that they're losing a tremendous amount of business because of communities combining dispatch centers, et cetera, et cetera, and they'd better get on the stick. So they are now writing translation packages, which I presume are much better. But that was the sticking point. A software package that was $250,000 that did work for the fire department versus a software package that was twice that amount of money that really had no interest in working with fire departments.
Recently, I visited the dispatch center, and there was some distinction between the computer programs that were used by the police. And I apologize for not focusing on the fire department, but.
Once a cop, always a.
You know?
Does that change the letter you just sent us?
You know what I mean, though, you know? I mean, I just want to make sure that I understand where the dispatch center is, you know. Are you saying that the software used by the police is the same in all four towns? Or don't you know?
Well, actually, that's not true. They're not using the software.
Well, I'm talking to the fireside, too.
He said the police. Yes, the police. I don't want you to have.
So you're saying that there's a, the CAD system is the same for Hingham Police and Fire?
Correct.
And is the same for the, all the four fire departments?
The CAD system is, the CAD system is one of dispatcher types an address into a system that tells them what to send. Okay. That system currently is the same for all four towns, fire and police?
Yes.
Okay. Where the diversity is, is after that call goes out, now the police have to write a report on an accident, and the fire department has to write a report on an accident. That's where the diversity is. So the program that's dispatching Hingham, Hull, Coasette, and the whole fire and fire departments, what engines go to Main Street, Hingham, et cetera, police departments, what units go to North Main Street, Coasette. That software is the same for the four towns. And then the reporting software is where, on the fireside, the reporting software is the same for the four towns. On the police side, it's different. Some towns are using a product called IMC, and I think Hingham's still using QED, is it? But Ted is right, I don't want to speak for the police, but.
Is that something we're going to address in another budget?
Yep.
Okay. All right, well, thanks very much. Always a pleasure seeing you.
Yes. I hope it's not in the middle of another blizzard.
You never know.
No, I think Mark made reference, I made reference to the cost issue, and that's a discussion we're going to have again, but the report that's coming from this asset committee in which Ted and I sit ex officio, has some great data points in it that explain the situation that Mark has described verbally. So when that comes out, I think a lot of our questions will be, they'll start to be answered. Okay, Irma, thank you for being.
Jeez. Hello, I'm here.
Sorry, sorry.
Go back to sick time. Sick time, what happens at the end of the year? Do people have to use the sick time, use it or lose it?
No, each firefighter.
They can carry over?
They carry over.
All of it?
All of it.
Sick time is accumulated throughout all departments.
Okay. So if they don't use it, it just builds up?
Correct.
Okay. Do you, following up on an equipment question and a personnel question, do you have, do you feel you're adequately staffed, both equipment-wise and personnel-wise, to handle two major incidents? And I'll just, October 26th, because I happen to be able to hear the whole thing unfold. This is where you had something at the shipyard, where you went and took command of that one.
Okay.
And then Billy Powers was down at the rather nasty brush fire.
Brush fire.
At the exact opposite end of town.
It depends on how you, what you describe as a major incident. There isn't a fire department in the country, with the exception of the city of New York, that can handle a significantly major incident by themselves. And I don't care whether it's Los Angeles, or Miami Beach, or Cincinnati, Ohio, or the town of Onset, Massachusetts, okay? There isn't a fire department in the country that can handle a major, major event by themselves. We all depend on mutual aid. It's the lifeblood of the fire service. And the perfect example is tomorrow, and Saturday, when Hingham firefighters will go to help our brothers in Normal, not for a fire, but for a very legitimate other reason. So you have to decide what a major incident is. We, Hingham, Hingham Fire can do very well with a fire in a single-family dwelling. Beyond that, we consider that a major incident. The city wouldn't. So you have to define what a major incident is. Now, when you have two major incidents, then it's strictly a mutual aid thing. And again, having that four-town dispatch makes it all work better, because the sharing of apparatus and the dispatching of apparatus can happen so much quicker without having to go through several steps. The incident you're referring to, and I apologize, it was, was a large brush fire during a very dry period early in the fall up in Black Rock off of, on the Hingham-Weymouth line. And we'll tell you that most of that fire was in Weymouth, although Hingham has much better access to it. And then we had a call for an incident over in the shipyard with smoke in the building, which we originally thought could have been serious, but it turned out it wasn't. And that's, again, one of the jobs of the fire chief, and the deputy chief as well, is to be paying attention on a day-to-day basis, whether you're in the station or at home, as to what's going on. And when that second call comes in, or, you know, you get in your vehicle and go to one, that's exactly what I did. The only mutual aid we had to bring on in that particular incident was a ladder truck from Hull, which is a turnout we didn't need, but it was called as a precaution. To bring out an interesting point there, Irma, because with the extra three men and with an extra man on the quint that that extra three people will provide, we may have been able to keep the quint in service that time during that incident and not have to take the crew off of the quint, leave it unstaffed on the apparatus floor to staff the brush truck. So in that particular instance, with those extra three people, we may not have had to call Hull. But it's, you know, mutual aid is much, it's practiced much more in the police. There's jurisdictional issues with the police that the fire doesn't have, doesn't have to deal with. Can we handle two major incidents? Absolutely not. And can we even handle one major incident? That, even that, depends. It depends on the level of the incident. We've had three very serious fires this year in Hingham. We actually have years that we don't have serious fires, but this year we had three very serious fires. Two in, two in, in February, I believe they were, one tally was at.
Yep.
You were here. And it was a fire in the Benjamin Lincoln House, a very, very, very old building. It was a very serious fire, and that building was saved because of good staffing, good equipment, and good training, and aggressive firefighting. And had that been in that, in that particular, and it was, what, 10 or 12 degrees out. In addition, it was a very, very cold night. And in a smaller town with three or four firefighters on duty than some of our surrounding towns go that low, that wouldn't have happened. And then add to the fact that you may have an ambulance out of town. So a community that runs four or five firefighters with an ambulance that's out of town, that means they're down to three. You know, in Hingham, if an ambulance is out of town, we drop from 11 to nine. So even nine is, it gives you a good hard punch at a fire, so. I don't know whether that answered your question or not.
No, it did. How are ambulance revenues?
I couldn't tell you. I'm not sure. I was going to look at those numbers today. As far as I know, they're about where they, where they have been, I really don't know.
Cool. What else did I have?
I'll get that answer for you.
I'd be curious, because we track those so carefully. I thank you for doing that analysis to show why you asked for the three. That graph is pretty explanatory, very simple, but that is a very compelling case. And hopefully, now, are you fully staffed now?
No, we currently have two, we have, currently have two openings. And we have two people who are putting, attempting to put through the pipeline to get them into a fire academy in May. And again, they will not be online, I'm glad you brought that up, they will not be online until September or October at the earliest where we can put them in the count. So even when we get those people online, or these three additional people, we could be still short on overtime funding, depending on how quick that happens. There is a slight possibility that the academy will move the people up, the two people that are scheduled to go to the nine-week training class at Outland Stowe from May to, I believe, March, but that's, that's very iffy right now. One of the things that's going on there is a lot of towns now are starting to hire again, and which has made slots in that academy even more difficult to get.
And they've not expanded the capacity of the academies?
Well, they did. They changed the training program out there from 12 weeks to nine weeks. And they also changed, I guess similar to the way they do it in the military now, when they can bring people in. One of the things they used to do is they'd start a class, and the three or four people washed out of that class, for whatever reason, they washed out. And those slots now would go open. Now what they're doing is they're bringing in new recruits every three weeks, so it's, so the training is done in three-week segments. So if four people wash out of the class that started on March 1st, when they get three weeks, the fourth week out, they can fill those slots up, because it's another, it's another group of training that's going on, and they'll make up that training they missed on the first half and the last part of the training. It's kind of the unique way of doing it, but the fire academy is trying very hard to catch up, catch up with that number.
Is that common, attrition to the academy?
The classes, Paul, used to be 72 to 75 people. And generally speaking, anywhere from four to six would wash out of a class. And that's, you know, that's one of the reasons you send people to that class, to see if they can cut it. You know, can they climb ladders? Can they, can they handle the stress of pulling, pulling the hose and all the various things? Firefighting is an extremely physical job, and there's a lot of academics that go on there, but it's one of the reasons you send personnel to the academy, make sure they can cut it.
One last question. The last couple of years, you've asked for a training officer. Have you found, and you didn't ask for it this year, have you found a way?
We haven't formally asked for a training officer. I think the day's coming when we are definitely going to need it. There's only two people that are really doing staff work in the fire department, we're very stressed. Fire Captain, Captain Dampson needs to say, has his hands full. I want to get the staffing up on the, on the fire engines first, which is, again, back to the three men. And at that point in time, I do think that there'd be, there's going to be a time where we're going to need somebody either part-time training, part-time EMS, or full-time training or something. That's, that's coming. We've got a lot on the plate, and I understand what I'm asking for the town. We're asking for two fire engines. We're asking for a couple of million dollars in station renovations. We're asking for three or four million dollars to possibly build a new fire station. We're going to be asking for eight men to staff that. I am cognizant of the fact that the town, you know, even though this, it's a great town to work in, this, Hingham, like any community, has limited funds. And I also have a responsibility as the chief to, to not deal with that, but to recognize that. So, yes, we're going to need, we're going to need an additional staff person at some point in the future. You know, if I wasn't asking for three men on the line side of the equation, then I may have asked for that person this year, but I think these three people are more important right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Very thorough.
I won't be in a while, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to call out sick.
Well, I'll just change the numbers then.
Thank you.
See you later.
Don't forget those fire alarms.
We're working on it.
Yeah, I know, you've been telling me that for two years.
I want to hear that siren going down Petrie Hill. Come on.
When the fire alarm box on Fort Hill Street comes out of service, you're going to find it on your doorstep.
I'm waiting. That's, that's something I'd welcome to see. It's only taken you two years.
All right, your next budget is the South Shore Country Club, and I see our golf course superintendent, Dave McGrill here, and.
Yeah.
Bill, do you guys want to come and sit with me? Phil and Terry?
If you don't mind my standing, I can probably get their attention.
As long as they can see your pants.
The detail of the budget starts on page 140.
What page, Benny?
140.
The detail is on 140, as Betty indicated, and the summary is on page 13, Roman numeral The summary shows the budget request of $2,181,001, and that is a reduction of 1.81% over the prior year. Okay, great.
That's done.
Before I started, I just wanted to make sure to thank the Country Club Management Committee for everything that they do for me, Bill as the chairman, Terry, and tonight, Kerry Ryan, Paul Casey, and Scott Peterson couldn't attend, but, you know, the work that these guys do is unbelievable. Bill, Bill especially, puts in, it's a full-time job what Bill does. He's a huge asset to the town. You guys are lucky to have him. I also want to thank Ted for his help with putting this budget together for me. So our 2015 fiscal year budget shows positive cash flow for the South Shore Country Club. We took a really hard look at it and believed that the revenue is pretty conservative. We actually built a 2015 budget pretty similar to some of the 2013 actuals with some changes that we see coming as far as membership structure and increasing daily fees on the golf side. We went through our expenses and kind of matched those with what our actuals were in 2013 and made a few changes. Obviously, our capital budget changes every year, and our capital budget is in our expenses that you see in front of you. But we also looked at, we took a hard look at our fixed costs through staffing, as it pertains to staffing, and tried to make some tweaks and changes so that we can try to lower some of those fixed costs to try to present, put together a budget that shows positive cash flow. You know, we had a good year in 2013. We're on target in 2014 to have a good year. We're right where we were at this point in time last year revenue-wise, and our expenses are pretty under control as to where they were last year at this point. are pretty under control as to where they were last year at this point in time. So, we see 2014 coming together pretty well for us. Granted, we have another six months to go, and that's some of our biggest revenue time of the year. But right now, it looks like we're in good shape in 2014. The one thing that we did do in 2015, and I'm not sure whether you guys have it right in front of you or not, but we put together an estimate of net income, which is something that Ted had asked us to really take a look at moving forward. So that's, I'm gonna draw your attention to page 148. So, just so that when we sit down with the CCMC and Ted and you guys and the auditors, everybody knows that we're not just focusing on cash flow, we're also taking a look at net income. You know, we know, we have a really strong idea. We know what our depreciation expense is every year for the next 20 years, basically. And so, we took that into account when we built the budget so that we know that we can produce positive net income on top of cash flow. And, and we should be able to, you know. So, that, that really helps us going into the year, knowing that we're not just focused on cash, which is something in the past we kind of had been doing. So, that's our, our 2015 budget. I was just gonna take a few seconds. It's kind of hard for me to, to explain exactly through all the line items where I think we'll be in 2015 in all these different lines, because it's a business that we run, and you know, we're, we're open for business today. So, I was gonna take a quick second and just go through where we're at, you know, kind of today, and what's happening in each of our operations currently, because I don't get a chance to come in front of you guys a lot. So, in 2014, like I mentioned, our revenues are almost to the dollar where they were at this point in time last year.
Is that the page, Rob?
Yeah, yeah.
So, Jay's gonna start talking about page 150 in your book. And this is where he outlines each of the sleeves of the activities of the Country Club.
So, in 2014, we ended 2014. 2013 was actually a great revenue year for us, and it could have been better, which was encouraging for us. And that's why, how we have a, you know, when we look at 2015, we believe that there's room for growth. 2013, we had basically no winter. We lost the entire month of March, which is, can be a $60,000 to $70,000 month for us. It was the first year since I've, we've been open for winter golf that we lost that month. And we still produced, you know, if you look at golf, we're up about 60 grand from the year before. If you look at restaurant, we're up about 20 grand. Our pool, our pool is, really did well in the past year. We added the pool heater and extended the season from June till through, through September. We opened in weekends in September, and we've added about $20,000 in revenue to, to our pool budget, with not a lot more expense. The bowling business is still growing strong. You know, it's a, it's a pretty consistent revenue stream for us. It's basically, basically bowling, bowling parties, birthday parties, adult parties, children's parties, and our leagues. Our daily fee bowling is, could, could definitely still grow. I don't know how to do that. I'm working on trying to figure out my bowling revenue. But I think eventually that can grow. But where it is right now, I think we're satisfied with it, too. So, that, that's part of why we're not stressing too much about how to grow that daily fee, because the more that we'd have to be open, there's risk, because we have to staff it to be open, you know, try to get people to come in off the street. But our parties and our leagues are strong, and all of our, our expenses are starting to go down in bowling, too, after a few years of operating it. You know, I mean, there was a lot of one-time expenses that we incurred in the first few years of the operation, but now, you know, we're kind of seeing them not happening. We don't have to spend the money on the equipment, redoing some of the equipment, buying new balls, things like that. So, the bowling alley really seems to be, kind of being a pretty tight, tight budget, which is nice for us. The golf simulator, still great little operation for us. It just started picking up with the snow last week. Through the holidays, it's pretty quiet. Not a lot of people have time for that. Our league started, but the daily fee doesn't really pick up until the beginning of January. But we anticipate, and that's really weather-dependent, so it's, I mean, I anticipate that it will be as strong as it was last winter, but it's kind of a double-edged sword. You know, we don't know if they're not, if they're indoors, they're not outdoors. So, you know, you can't have it both ways. It definitely is a one, one or the other. No one will choose to play indoor golf on a day where it's 55 degrees in January. So, you know, we just take it one way or the other. So, basically, our revenue is, you know, it continues to grow every year. If you look at our, if you look at our bottom-line revenue year after year, it just continues to grow. You know, we're, we're currently looking at ways to continue to grow that. We think golf-wise, we've kind of maxed out where we're at with the golf course. We can't really fit more people on the golf course than where we're at. We're pretty lucky that most of our rounds are filled. So, we're, we're trying to look at ways, maybe with the pool down the line, that we can increase some revenue through bowling, if we can try to grow our, our daily fee bowling. And also, through the restaurant, you know, the next few years with Elio, the rent, the rent kicked in this past January, about a year ago, just about a year ago. And it grows as time goes on throughout the contract. So, that's a new, another revenue stream that we'll, it will be looking forward to receiving. You know, that, that part of the business is, is done really well. Elio's going into his fifth year, I believe, in operation, which is something that we had never seen before with any other vendor at the Country Club. And he still does well. I mean, it's, you go over there, any night of the, you know, Monday and Tuesday right now, he's closed for the, for the remainder of the winter until April to try to cut some costs that he was incurring. But other than that, if you go in there, especially at this time of year with the holiday parties, it's, it's, it's a bustling little area, you know, which is hard to believe in January or December that, that's the way it is. Because when I first started working here, it was pretty much a ghost town, you know, those nights. So, it's, he's doing well. The operation is doing well. You know, we, we still are dealing with a lot of the deferred maintenance stuff, and that, that cuts into what our bottom line looks like. An example would be the sewer project that we're doing right now. Things come up like that that we have no clue about, and we have to deal with them. We fund them out of cash, out of our operating, and it, it affects our bottom line. But those are infrastructure things that we're dealing with, and we're gonna, you know, hopefully, at some point in time, there'll be less and less. But right now, we're still dealing with them as they come up. Fortunately, we're, we're still able to fund some of the capital projects that do help us with revenue, like our bunker project. We're in the, the third year of a five-year plan to replace all the bunkers on the golf course, and that draws, you know, huge, the golfers love it. The sand traps, yeah. It draws huge attention from people, you know, little things like that. In the past, it's been, oh, we're doing sewer projects and painting the building, and the golfers don't see that, you know. So, they, to see that we have a contractor coming in and doing work, it definitely gets a buzz going, so it's good. We're gonna continue with it as long as we can afford it. So, yeah, our budget for 2015 is a little bit less expense-wise, and that's because we went through it with a fine-tooth comb and cut some of our, figured out a way to cut some of our fixed costs and also lowered our capital plan. We're gonna do a little bit of financing rather than outright purchasing of equipment, and that helps us lower our, our costs. So, I think that's about it. Bill, did you have anything?
I don't. I think you covered it pretty well. If you guys have any questions?
Well, thank you. First of all, given where, Bill, you, you were there at the beginning.
Right.
And so, there's one very important person. They live in Boston, and they run, what's the office in the Division of Revenue, Ted?
Department of Revenue.
Yeah. And, and the audit report also reflected the, the work that you all have done. So, and this budget is indicative of that. So, I'm very pleased and complimentary. It was a long row. We're not done yet.
No.
I understand that.
Yes, thank you.
But I very much appreciate that. So, Irma, you're first.
Having been involved with the budget since 2002, I think this is the best, most creative, most far-reaching budget that I've seen. You've just gotten better and better every year. I really appreciate the creativity around the bowling alley, because it will come.
Yeah. I think it will, too.
Yeah. And so much of, of what you're dealing with is seasonality and the weather.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, no one can control Mother Nature. But I think this is great. Sitting at your meetings, I've seen some of the inner workings of this, and I, I just think the budget is really great. I think you did a good job sharing with the people at home, too.
Thank you. Thanks for your help when you come to the meetings.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you. Paul?
I've never met you, but you seem like you're doing a good job there.
I've brought that up to Ted a few times. I said, I remember this earlier.
New here. I am, I am pleased to see names that are familiar to me in your employee roster, which, to me, you know, hiring the local people is, is an excellent thing. I'd encourage you to do that whenever you could. I'm gonna be celebrating my 40th high school reunion from Hingham High at the Country Club this summer, so I encourage any of you folks who went to Hingham High and are thinking about a reunion, to use the Country Club. It'd be a nice venue for that.
I'm sure it'll be a, a good night. Elio does a great job.
Yes.
He does.
We're looking forward to it.
And that's, that's why Scott Peterson couldn't attend tonight. They had their Rotary Christmas Party up there, so he's at that, that time of year.
It was nice meeting you. Good job. Thank you, gentlemen.
Can I add one other thing with Elio? Working with us, he does, he does a great job, no matter what he does. But with Jay's help, he does an awful lot of community service, too, that goes very much under the radar screen. He doesn't ask for any publicity. He doesn't go looking for it, but he's always there and ready to pitch in, donate here, donate there. So, they're, they're wonderful tenants.
Very much. He's, I, to this day, I don't think he's ever said no to me, so that's good.
I was, I was there.
That's the right question.
Well, I was there when we went through the agony of trying to find him. And, you know, he has been such, certainly an asset, and we all were there last Wednesday for an event, and service was impeccable. People were there when you needed it, and it was just a wonderful evening.
It's great to hear.
And the food's really good.
Yes.
You gotta make sure, you know, if you're a restaurant, the food's gotta be good. And he, he does it really well.
You know, it's interesting. I go there for lunch occasionally with my wife, and it's now become a stop. You know, it's now competing with other locations, and that's a credit to him.
Yeah, that is.
Not just golfers who are, who are going.
That's part of the, the constant tug-of-war back and forth is the golfers and the outside public. And, you know, we try to find a balance between it, but it's tough. But I think we've figured out some different ways to do it. The outdoor patio helps.
Can I make a suggestion? I'll bet if you light some of that golf course up at night, that you can see it from the, the restaurant, then...
I think it would help.
He actually, Elio suggested that to us. We haven't had that in the budget, but he wanted to light the trees, the trees out of them.
Oh, that's nice.
Well, I tried to do it. I just tried to do it the cheap way.
Just a thought.
It didn't work. It worked for about two nights, and then I'll, I'll look into it more.
That would, that would be an enhancement.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. One of the things people tell me when I take them up there is the view is incredible, and they haven't noticed it before, because they haven't been there. Maybe they just golfed.
At night, you don't get it.
Of course, right, man.
Yeah, you don't.
So, great.
Well, see if I can get Elio to pay for it. Hopefully, he's not watching.
If the price of bourbon goes up, I'll know why.
He also, for the audience, Elio and Rafael does Groupon's.
They do.
So, keep, keep your eye out for those, for those people that do Groupon's.
Yes, he does. Those are good deals.
I want to, I'll admit.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Merry Christmas.
We have...
You know, before Terry goes, I think I would be remiss if I did not comment on the festive attire that Terry is in. I noticed right away.
We all noticed. We all wanted to highlight you on TV.
The trousers are, are very festive.
Bob, keep the waist, waist-up only, Bob.
Those are, those are really cool. Merry Christmas.
Chuck for lots sent those to you, Terry?
A lot of so.
Chuck, that's Chuck's Christmas present? The pants?
Merry Christmas, you guys.
Santa's back on. Okay. Thank you, Bob.
All right. So, now we have a series of budgets. Assistant Town Administrator Betty Foley will take you through the Selectman's Budget, Legal, Town Hall, Town Meeting, unclassified. Health is on here, but, oh, sorry, it's Health Imperatives.
Health Imperatives, I guess. The Selectman's Budget detail is on page two. New initiative that I had requested that unfortunately Ted did not, was not able to recommend funding was a grant writer. I had suggested that we once again consider the possibility of a grant writer in the Selectman's Office. There are, there are many opportunities that if you, if you had someone who had sufficient time to really devote to, to grant writing, there are a lot of opportunities we could pursue, but it's very difficult with existing staff to, to put in a whole lot of time into grant writing, because it can be very time-consuming. Other than that, the salaries go up with contractual increases. The expenses remain pretty much the same except for things going up, dues go up with the salaries. They're a function of salary, many of the dues.
The year-to-year increase for the Selectman's Budget is 1.93%.
Betty, the $25,000 in the clerical?
That was the request for a grant writer.
Okay. That's fine. Okay. Any questions on anybody? I think that's very straightforward.
Yeah, that one is straightforward. What is the overtime for? Is that, I'm looking at the, at page three. Is that just miscellaneous?
What that is, is one of our clerical positions is 28 hours a week, and with them we bud, we have some overtime allowance if it goes over the 28 hours, which is three and a half days of overtime.
Okay. Yep, I'm good.
Okay.
I mean, you can see we haven't actually expended our overtime in the last few years.
Yeah. Okay. Next, then?
The next one is legal.
That's page?
It's always an easy one.
That's on page 16. And as you can see, I requested an increase in legal. I looked at the last five years, and I looked at our budget average for the last five years, which is considerably more than what our current budget is. Given the fact that many of our legal expenses are tied to permitting expenses, and, and we're seeing an uptick of activity on the second floor, people applying for permits and so forth, I thought this was the time to maybe look at increasing it. Ted has, Ted has agreed to recommend a lesser amount. Going back for the detail.
Where is that one?
The summary is on page eight. I think summary is fine compared to the detail. And Betty's correct, 232,000 is the initial department request, and Betty suggested another 100,000 more, bring it up to 332. I've recommended to you another 18,000, which will bring it up to 250,000. It's a 7.76% increase year over year. And I guess part of this is, as you know, we try to manage our legal expenses as best we can, but if we need to use legal services to protect the town's interests, you know, it's often penny-wise, pound foolish to not do so. And, you know, our trend has been downward the last few years. If you pull out, you know, the Hershey Street, the Hershey House settlement from a few years ago from legal expenses, which is there only because that's the method we use to process that transaction, our legal expenses have been on, on the downturn. And as I sit down here, I think about the active litigation that we have moving forward, we should be able to manage. Of course, we don't know what new litigation is gonna come forth, and something usually Of course, we don't know what new litigation is gonna come forth, and something usually always does. Part of this is to hold it back, is, you know, try to hold our feet, self-hold our feet to the fire and try to manage to a lower number.
Any questions on...
Just a comment. I appreciate Ted doing this because I'm constantly on him. I'm very concerned about where our legal budgets are going, but I appreciate this.
The trend is right, and we had one case I think you all have heard about that has consumed my six years of being here. And if all goes well by next January, that big expense goes away. So, but I don't wanna say who the case is because it's still pending, so if it happens, we will, and that'll be a big one. And the other thing, I think Betty has provided us historically a list of the various cases and that you can update for us so we can see where the particular cases are coming from, to Ted's point about the cases you don't anticipate.
You know, and I will say that I think the area is correct. You know, as said previously, it's gonna be in the permitting areas. You know, the 40B activities require a response from the town. And, you know, there's, I think, grave consequences to the town financially, culturally, if not, you know, if they don't look at those aggressively. And they take quite a bit of expense legally, both in, you know, zoning and in planning, and ultimately in litigation if we object to some of that activity. You know, we have a cell tower issue going up right now. So each of these activities, and the reason it is, because there's more money at stake in the permitting area than it is in, you know, employment law or some of the other areas that we, that we deal with legal services.
I have a comment. I, I think in the time that I served on the Planning Board prior to coming here, that the submissions by applicants are much more, some of them anyhow, they're much more complicated, and I think they're more time-consuming for the people on the second floor that have to contend with them. And frankly, if there's a need to get legal assistance, it's more productive to get it earlier. I'm not sure whether, you know, the fees that are being charged with respect to those submissions are realistic. This might be the time to start thinking about increasing those application fees and the like, because I just think that the review effort is very different now than it was in the '90s and the '80s.
When was the last time the fees were looked at and increased?
I think they recently went up, but not in any appreciable, meaningful way.
Three years ago.
Yeah. Three years ago we looked at it. I remember, and we adjusted. All of the fees was a review process, but you might be right, given the increase that we're back in 2007, '08 levels. Yeah. And activity. And, I mean, the Planning Board of the ZVA almost always, you know, encounters a development team when there's a project of consequence before them. And, you know, they've got, usually they've got their in-town lawyer, their local guy, their engineer, their landscape architect, their traffic engineer, and, you know...
That's good.
They're coming in, so if it's just, you know, five people who show up, you know, once a week and kinda hummina, hummina, that's not a balanced response. So it's, being a lawyer myself, I know people always hate legal bills, but I think if we're not paying attention right out of the gate, we run a huge risk. Like Ted said, this 40B project, without getting into a particular one, I can say fairly comfortably that none of them are typically welcomed if it's a hostile filing. So there's always an invocation of, well, we're gonna stop this, we're gonna fight this. Question is how?
I understand. Okay. Any other comments? No?
Nope.
Okay. Town Hall?
Town Hall is on page 48.
And the summary is on page nine, Roman numer nine. And the budget required has a couple of additional requests. It's a fair, one of the fairly substantially increasing budgets, and I'll let Betty walk you through what the details are here.
In the salary line, we included the cost of a staff person for the lunchroom that we're, we've taken over downstairs on the second floor. As you know, up until September of this year, the cafeteria was part of the school program. That wasn't working, so we took it over as of September, and during the first three months, we've been running at a loss, which is not unexpected. During the first quarter of operation by the town, the loss was $3,728. And that included benefits as well as salary and expenses.
I assume we're gonna look at prices going forward?
We're looking at prices. We're looking at reaching out to, if people are having meetings in Town Hall, catering the meetings, and in fact, Doreen has done some of that. We're also, she's, she's now sending out blasts as far as offering to prepare things for a DPW if they wanna come over and pick up a lunch, or the library and that sort of thing.
That's good.
Good.
Are we gonna see an analysis?
Betty prepared one for the first three months, which I can provide to you. And I think, well, I'll let Betty talk about what it is. I'll just say that no matter, you guys know my, my father had a restaurant for many, many years, and I just know he's smiling right now, knowing no matter what I can do with my career, I just can't seem to get away from food service. And here it is. I'm driving people to the, to the town cafeteria, getting conferences in here and scheduling meetings and trying to create some activity there.
If our loss is only for the first three months, $3,000, that is not bad.
And that includes, I'll be glad to provide all of you with...
Well, are you gonna give it to us on a spreadsheet?
I will.
Okay, great.
So the loss is essentially $3,700 for the, for the first three months, but that loss includes, and you asked for this, Arm, it includes full total cost of ownership, including healthcare. The losses that we've been running in there for the last, you know, 10 to 15 years through the school department have averaged in the $4,000 to $6,000 range per year. I'm pretty sure that that's the numbers that John Ferris was talking about, but that did not include healthcare. Healthcare was carried in the town's healthcare budget outside that. Betty's folded that into the total cost here to see, so, you know, really, if we were to pull that out, the losses appear to be looking at about $14,000, $15,000. And if you took healthcare costs out, we'd be looking at about $2,000 to $3,000 a year in overall loss. So I think we're, we're doing, you know, slightly better right out of the box, which is not usually what happens with restaurants.
I'll rely on your Greek background. Okay.
You got Greek salad down there?
They do. You go down there. Doreen will make you anything you want, practically.
For a reasonable price.
Someone thinks so. But it's good.
Okay. The other increase...
Also, also related to the lunchroom is the $10,000 in expense. And let me just explain that the revenue does not go into this account. The revenue goes into the general fund, so that we have to show all our expenses in this account, but they will be offsetting revenue.
And I've, I've increased local receipts accordingly based on Betty's estimate of what the revenue is for there to offset this.
But you're good. Your spreadsheet shows everything, right?
Yes. The other increase that I've programmed in here is $4,100 in telephone. As it stands right now, as technology increases, so do our costs. We provide iPads to certain departments so that they can do permitting stuff in the field. We have to pay for a data plan for each one of those iPads. Everyone who goes from the old-fashioned flip phone to an iPhone or something that they can get their email on, there's an increased charge on a monthly basis for data plan for each one of those. So we have to account for that somewhere in the budget. So those are the increases. Everything else is the same.
The same. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Town Meeting?
Town Meeting is on page 18.
The summary is on page eight. Town Meeting was one of my easier budgets to recommend. Budget was requested at $30,992, and I recommended that amount. It's a $54 reduction over the prior year and a negative 0.17%.
This envisions a two-night town meeting, a single town meeting of two nights. That's the way we normally budget it because anything else would be, would be a problem.
Any questions? No?
This is an easy one.
Yeah, it's an easy one. We know. Two nights. Keep your speeches short.
Or don't kill them.
Or don't kill them. Just sit down. Have you noticed we should give Mike, we should give Mr. Puzo a clock, you know, and give him, you know, like they do on the census, you know? How long, how much you're costing as you're talking?
Just kidding, Mike.
No, they're not.
Betty, you're gonna just do the, the unclassified portion, not the property and casualty?
Just the unclassified portion, which is the same as, as last year's budget request.
What page is that?
It's on page 180. This is the budget that pays for the town report, the clocks through out town, that the caretakers of clocks take care of, any clock repair, and social forums and dues.
Can I ask you a question about the clocks, as I very much like clocks? Does that include the clock in the center?
Yes.
Is that, is that, is that running with the bell, do you know?
Don't know, but I'll find out for you.
It is.
That, that's a great sound, especially at midnight.
Because it was broken for a while.
Yes.
Jack Studley used to wind that bad boy. How many clocks are there?
Four. I'm trying to figure out where they all are now.
You didn't think she was gonna know that?
You know?
I know one's here.
Well, I'll ask you offline where the other three are, because I'm trying to think.
Counting that one?
No.
The one in the square center.
Is the other one? Is it by the library?
Is it on the second parish or...? I'm trying to think.
Second parish, yes, one.
I think. I have to come up with one more.
Is there one at the library?
No.
I don't think so.
No, it's inside.
These are all outside, right?
Yes. I will come up with it for you.
Thanks. There is? I don't think so. It's just a sign.
Okay.
If you're done with unclassified, your next budget would be Health Imperatives, and I think you combine that with the South Shore Center, and that would be...
Social, Health Imperatives is page 113, and Social Women's Center is page 117.
113?
113. Health Imperatives. Health Imperatives is, I think it used to be called Women's Rape Places Services or something like that.
Something like that, yeah.
And it's been the same amount for a number of years.
It's been the same amount since I was on advisory.
And if you, if you look at the budget backup behind here, you could see the report from both entities that detail the type of services they provide to the community. And they give us a report annually that talks about the type of work. And in this case, I know in the South Shore Women's Resource Center, calls to our hotline, 90 calls from Hingham residents, and they go through the statistics of how many times, you know, people have called requesting restraining orders or other civilian advocacy through the police department.
And one year that, when I was on advisory, we did ask for statistics, and surprisingly, Hingham does use these services.
They also, they also have a great outreach program as far as training and so forth.
Right. Very good. Okay. Questions? Okay.
But this continues to be a resource that's available.
Are we gonna talk about dispatch or we're putting that on?
No, no, I can, I'll be happy to...
Or shall we save that till after the hall?
Well, I, let me, if I can tell you, Ted will provide us, as we asked him, a, I mean, part of the delay has been built by the fact that they're negotiating, and that's not done yet, I don't think.
Labor negotiations.
Labor negotiations. So that has to, that, that should be included in the analysis. A couple, this is the South, the dispatch center. They're, the, the, Arm is raising the same question I raised, which was the request for the dispatch center for year-over-year is 11% in the initial pass-through, but I am advised that may be higher depending on how other things fall out. This is an issue Ted has to, I think, explain to the public as he, to us, to get a full-blown, what were we told when you are on advisory, you are on planning, and then what has happened since then? And what are the projections for what's forthcoming? And part of this is an unfortunate, it is unfortunate because the arrangement that we have for managing this is four towns where we pick up 50% of the cost, and the other towns do a proportionate share of the other 50%. So the question is, the reason I asked the fire chief the question about the software is this was a big issue when they built this center, and now it's become another issue again, which is reinventing the wheel. And, you know, obviously, Mark is happy with it. I don't know where Mike is. I understand there's some of the other police chiefs have some reservations about it. But that's part of the, part of the solution. The other towns are, to my understanding, are achieving the benefit. We're not receiving as much financially in the benefit as we originally thought, so I'd like to understand why. And so I'm not voting it until there's a meeting scheduled. It may be, it may be later on the budget, the 23rd of January. Can I leave a message with the other Selectmen to have a meeting with them and the Town Administrator, Town Managers to discuss everything from soup to nuts, the formula, the workload, and all the rest of this, so we see where this ends up? Because if...
Why are we picking up 50%?
The formula, the formula is based on population and call volume and a combination, weighted combination of the two. And based upon those statistics, we represent 50% of the workload at the Regional Dispatch Center, and the remaining three towns combine the, for the remaining 50%. And that's approximate. It's not exactly 50%.
In fairness to everybody, when this was first promised or promoted to us, the call counts were manual.
Yeah.
It was a push-a-button. And if you remember to push the button on the call, you just handle. And when they got, they, as Mark just explained in his discussion, now they have accurate data on not only the number of calls, but the type of calls, where they came from, how long it took them, and a host of other information that they didn't have. Our experience was that it was based on manual estimates at the time this was promoted. So that's one problem. And then this, the second issue is, is the allocation formula correct now that we know what the data is? And then there's a couple of other management sub-issues I think that Ted's been dealing with, with the other town administrators, which, you know, I, I think the structure in some, it causes part of the problem, in my opinion, because while we pay 50%, we don't have 50% of the vote. And, and that's an issue that needs to be addressed. So we have to, we have to relook and see, is it working to everyone's advantage so that we all benefit equally?
So you're saying, too, that if the call line testing were visited to see if we really do represent 50% of the call?
Well, that's right, but the management structure that decides the decision, if we are 50% of the work, are we 50% of the management process? Which, that's, that's a question. Maybe this is the way it is, and it, and then interfering with this a little bit is the state formula that governed how this was initially set up. So that kind of muddies the waters. So we're at this for a few years. It's the first real experiment in regionalization, and we're a lot smarter now than we were four years ago when this all started. So I don't know if there's anything else you think I should say or not say. I'll leave it.
No, I mean, I think we have some work to, still have some work to do. I know that, that you, this board asked me for, you know, an audit of, you know, all the data. Unfortunately, you know, we're only one part of that process, one of four towns. I need the other three towns to agree to go through that, otherwise it's an exercise somewhat in futility. And, you know, they've been reluctant to go through that process. They perceive it differently than we do. You know, the, the dispatch center was pitched here in Hingham with, you know, claims of huge cost savings, and that's not how it was presented in the other three communities. So their expectations are different than yours. I can certainly understand if someone came to you and said, you're gonna save a lot of money if you do this, and you turn around and you see the money not going down, but you see it going up, you know, you can ask why. Those questions weren't being asked in the other communities because that's not how they perceived that transaction to be going through. They looked at it for enhancement of services. And I did...
Whether cost avoidance in two towns...
Correct.
They didn't have to build a dispatch center. So-
And not only that, then they don't have to build a dispatch center, but, you know, they didn't have to staff up for emergency medical dispatching, which is required by law now. And Hingham already had been dispatched at that level since we- one of the requirements is you have to have two people on staff at all times. And now we have that. And many of the- several of the other towns had periods of shifts where they wouldn't have that, so-
EMT certified?
Yeah.
I think one of the other unintended consequences of dispatch being here in Hingham, in the building, it has aggravated the space issues that we're facing now. Where the police department used to have the dispatch space and could come and go. Dispatch is now an entity on its own. And we are facing space pressures from several departments within Town Hall that are just growing and there ain't nowhere to go.
Well, I think you might recall that we had some of those conversations maybe five or six years ago about that. And at the time, the, you know, the former police chief was contemplating relocating the police station into an independent location outside of the building. I think they were looking at a joint light plant up at Cushing Street. And so impacting the space within that side of the facility wasn't an issue because they planned on not being here. Unfortunately, some of those issues weren't shared all the way up the chain here. And I, of course, as you know, came in, you know, well after the fact, so.
So, I think we'll- I mean, I won't get too far ahead of ourselves. Ted's got the numbers and I know that I have to, with your support, go see the other folks.
Yeah, you have it. I don't think we should be paying for the service that goes to other towns.
No, so-
I have received an audit proposal from a company that has been- that we hired to implement and manage. If we are going to proceed down an audit, I know we had thought about potentially using Powers and Sullivan, but I would recommend that we utilize the firm that's been working in there because I think what's going to happen is any audit firm is going to turn around and go right back to the source and ask for an understanding of what the documents are and how the money had been transpired. And I think we have enough audit capability here to verify that whatever we get back is- does tie to our financial records. But, you know, I think that's something for us to consider.
I'd like the discussion, to the extent that it can, to speak to the computer software that the police use.
Okay, and I can- I can give you a little bit more background on that if you'd like. I know Mark doesn't, you know, appropriately didn't want to talk for the police department and that issue. But, you know, what Mark explained to you is that the system runs off of a computer rated dispatch CAD, for an abbreviation. And the records management software for the police department and the fire department, we use AmbuPro for the fire department. All four fire departments use the same software package. And on the police side, we use QED. When we came to this four years ago, Hingham used a company called Microsys, which we knew we were going to move on from. They were not part of the mix going forward. QED and IMC were the two companies that were part of the mix going forward and two of the bidders to the software projects. Three of the towns, Cohasset, no, all the other three towns, Cohasset, Norwell, and Hall, all used IMC. It seemed pretty logical to me that we were going to choose IMC. As Mark indicated to you, when IMC came in, A, their bid was twice as much as QED. But on top of that, they indicated that they wouldn't work- they wouldn't, what we call a crossover bridge to the ambulance software, which would render their product essentially useless. And that really was a nonstarter. You know, you can't have a software program that's not going to respond to the police, to the fire side of the equation. So when they were rejected, we moved to QED. And about two years ago, after implementing QED in all four towns, several of the towns decided to go back to IMC on their own volition because they felt the IMC product worked better for them on the police side. And part of this budget includes software to move the entire system back to IMC. IMC has come back with a much better proposal and, you know, we're exploring it. You know, I'm listening. I'm trying to be sensitive to the needs of the other three towns. But Hingham implemented QED. And our officers learned it and they're working with it. They all claim it's more cumbersome than the IMC product. But I know some of you have worked with software products before. Most of them have some cumbersomeness to them. And usually it's, you know, grind it out. You know, put your nose down there and get it done. And our guys did it. So I'm a little skeptical about wanting to spend several hundred thousand dollars four years in to buy a new system, but I'm listening.
I think you need to look at what is fully integrated, not what's good for one and not the other. But everybody should be using the same thing. I find it hard that they're not. And I then question the statistics coming out of- I don't understand how if everybody's using different software, it can come together somewhere, having built systems.
Some of the efficiencies that we, you know, we were looking for, or the enhancements to public safety, especially on the police side, you know, we don't have right now. We were able to identify, you know, individuals that were known locally to the four departments because we could share databases. We're not sharing databases on the police side now.
That's a problem.
And so that's one of the efficiencies that's kind of lost. And, you know, again, it's regionalization, so we have to work with partners and, you know, we can't dictate to people what they have to do. And so I think it's- that's what's part of the trying part about regionalization.
I think one of the things that's troubled me since the beginning, it doesn't seem like there was a needs document, or if you'll pardon an old fashioned term, a definition. Had the definition- I mean, we would have been shot, right Bruce?
The requirements were not clear and-
Or were there any?
Well, it's interesting. I'll go back and dust off the dirt, but three times I offered to go down because I was involved in this. And I was advised by the previous management to- not the board, to stay away. That they knew how to do this and they were under control. And you walk through there, you and I built large team management systems.
They did.
And, you know, this system is too small to be efficient. You can't do it with four towns. You don't get the advantages of efficiency unless you have more towns involved with more work so that the people work at a higher pace and all the rest of that stuff.
But if you can't get it to work, like across all of the entities it has to serve, which police, fire, dispatch itself, and then your management teams who need the statistics. Because what I sensed from- and I have to go back and talk to Maureen again, the dispatch. What I sensed from Mark today that I didn't know, if you want a complete view of an incident, I can't go to one place and ask for a download.
No.
I have to go to dispatch and then I go to fire and I go to police.
And now I'll say the magic word, which, if you go out west, why do they have public safety directors? Why? Because they built it as they were growing, they built cross lines, and they recognized that there's efficiencies to be gained when they work more cohesively together so that they can address it that way. But it's more difficult here because we have 300 years of history keeping it separate. And I'm not saying that's the answer, I'm just saying that's to your point about getting a comprehensive look at an incident so you know who was there and how many and how long and all the rest of it.
Right.
Yeah, that's what you need.
So more to come, I gather.
Yes.
Can you just tell me, for the benefit of the folks at home, do we have a breakdown as to, you know, which town uses the dispatch center the most in terms of calls for service? I mean-
We can get that.
If we're using the services, you know, at three or four times the rate of Cohasset, which is a much smaller town on Norwell.
Well, that was the concept of the call volume and the population. Again, when we went into this, I think ultimately it'll move more towards call volume. But the original intermunicipal agreement called for a melding of population and call volume and spreading it out over a period of time so that the rate- and the requirement to go back and look at that is coming up next year pursuant to the IMA to allow for- we didn't want to look- originally, they did not want to look at it every single year because if someone had a spike in activity one year, then they didn't want their assessment to be skewed for a period of time. So-
But an 8,000 person town is going to, just by definition, be very different than a 22,000 person.
Correct, it is. And hence the fact we pay 50%.
There's a concept here, Paul, that Irma and I lived with. It's not just the number of calls. It's the duration of the call.
And the complexity of the call.
We used to call it call volume, which was if you take a simple call that says, "How do I get to the Hingham Town Hall?", that takes a minute and, you know, a minute and 22 seconds.
Depending on where you are.
Yeah, well, right. But just-
Straight down the street.
Let's say you're at Queen Anne's Corner. If you're at Queen Anne's Corner and it's an emergency ambulance and requiring fire service and other things, that's a call that may take five, six, seven, eight minutes. And so the call volume, which is how much work was involved for the person handling the call, is what you want to really do because it's the work they generate, not the calls. It's the type of work they generate. So if you have a lot of robberies in one town, that's a different length of a call than if you just have-
A lot of MBAs.
Yeah. So you just need to understand the work volume that's- and every town will be different because of its- of who they are and where they are and what the makeup is.
It'd be interesting to see some real statistics out of it comparing town over town.
Yeah.
I took a tour of the facility and I spoke to the woman who runs it. Very informative. And she was talking about the distinction between the call taker and the person who inputs the information into the computer to feed it to the units. I'm not sure that that model is in place at the moment.
It is not. It is not. We don't have call takers. We have just some- we have dispatchers and we have supervisors. And one of the approaches that we've wanted to look at is to get to a point, more likely as we grow, where we have call takers that triage certain calls and then transfer over, you know, certain ones to dispatchers, handle all the ones, for example, you know, "Where is Town Hall?", a call taker can handle that. "I'm having a heart attack." Now we need the dispatcher on board and we need to move through, you know, those issues. So-
Speed is key though, Ted. I mean, some of these calls, you've got to be- I've done dispatching as a police officer and I was present, you know, when it transitioned to civilian dispatch. And it was rough. I mean, these people have got to be skilled and very good at what they do.
Training has been, you know, a big part of what's been driving our costs higher. You know, training has mastered itself in different ways. It's not just classes or exercises, but it's just downtime. Time to take someone off the floor, to explain it, to walk them through, or just slowness in coming up to speed with new tasks. And, you know, we've gotten some reports which I'll ask the Shrek to share with all the towns, especially around the emergency medical dispatch, where our skill set has been coming, you know, fairly steeply up the curve now positively. And I think, you know, we have some financial issues to work out. We still have a labor contract to work out. One of the things I think we're starting to see much, much less of is concern from the police and fire about how the dispatching is working. You remember the letter that we received from the captains in the fire department a year ago? You know, that seems to have abated and people seem to see how it's working. One of the approaches we took to that was, you know, we wanted to put the two entities together. So we have these dispatchers over there and we have policemen out in the road and we have firefighters and paramedics on the street. And they didn't know who each other was, really. And so we started moving our firefighters and our, sorry, captains through the fire department, through the dispatch center, and same with the police department. And, you know, seeing who's on the other end of that call, you know the voice, you might hear it, but now you see the face with it. It's created a little bit better environment where we can trade some experience back and forth. So we hear from the fire department, "This is what we want you to work on." One of the issues is coming up to speed with knowing areas of the town. We have colloquial names for certain areas. And if you don't work in town or you haven't lived in town-
We know it.
You know, it's a challenge.
We just did that deliberately.
So-
We call in these obscure names of town locations to the dispatcher and see what they did with it.
Well, so that's a challenge for us. And, you know, it takes some time for people to understand that data. Ride arounds help, you know. And so, but I think that's- for me, that's the most important part. And if you sense that I'm not as- I'm concerned about the issues you've raised without any doubt, but I think our core mission statement is starting to gel. We need to get a handle on these other issues.
People have to have confidence when they call for help that help's going to get there quick.
And I feel very confident that if that wasn't the case, Mark and Bob and Glenn and Mike would be knocking on my door immediately. That's the message I've given to them and I want them to come back and, you know, feed me data that says if that's inaccurate.
Well, who's ultimately accountable if, you know, that heart attack call comes in and it's, you know, the officer shows up at the door four minutes as opposed to three? I mean, to me, there's got to be- I mean, we had a rule of thumb when I worked as an officer. You get a call, you're there within three minutes, no matter where you're assigned, in your area.
Well, response times are also, you know, going to be a little different probably from when you were on the force, just simply because of where we are with manpower, where we are with development. So for you to move from one end of the town to the other end of the town was different than it is today, just simple traffic patterns.
Pretty good at getting there.
I know, yeah.
I mean, you know, you dissect us.
Yeah, but it's still, you know, it's- so response times have variable issues with it. One of the things I've been concerned about and one of the reasons I think the dispatch center is a good idea long-term is now we can get real good independent data of exactly how these response times are.
Yeah, that's good.
And as time goes on, we'll get much more of that data.
Yeah.
But we need everybody on the same computer system for that to work.
Yeah. Mark has a map that I mentioned earlier where he can- he knows where he's vulnerable, you know, where he has to be quicker on the, if you will, on the responses.
Listening to the calls, the quality of the call and the crispness and the quickness just over time has improved dramatically.
Police and fire?
Yeah.
Both?
Both.
Good.
And it's interesting because you learn to recognize the voices on there and you know who is- I mean, there are some that have been there a long time that are just right on it. And then you watch some of the newer ones as they progress and they get better and better. So just over the last year, they've gotten better.
Well, so there's more to- more to-
We'll come.
Thank you for the question.
Thanks for that, Ted.
That's good. Okay. Selectmen report. Do we have any votes? We do.
Yeah.
We do. We have a couple of votes. Okay, Ms. Louder, would you?
I would with pleasure. Make a motion to approve an agreement with Spectre Manufacturing Incorporated for an aluminum closed refuse trailer in the amount of $72,239.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Haley?
I move that we approve the Conservation Commission's application fee of $30 to conduct administrative reviews of certain limited projects as outlined in the commission's recent amendment to the Hingham Wetland regulations.
Okay. Ted, can you?
I'll second it.
You'll second? Okay, could you have an explanation for the folks at home?
Sure. This is an attempt by the Conservation Commission to allow the conservation agent in certain cases to be able to issue the appropriate permit documentation to allow a project to move forward without having a full board hearing. It's a limited review and a limited scope. And, you know, they think it'll help streamline processes for- primarily for residents. I don't think this is really going to be something that businesses, larger developments, are going to be able to utilize. They would fall into the full commissioner's approval. But, you know, if you have a- you're going to put a shed up in your backyard or you're doing something and you think it might be the little wetlands and you want something, a notice of intent or determination, you can move through the administrative offices rather than going through the whole board and having to go through a posting and a hearing period and having your project, you know, moved back three, four weeks.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. There being no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well.
I missed- I think we just say we have 28. I counted them.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, all right, so.
I'll make a motion to renew 28 annual common victular licenses as shown on the proposed vote sheet.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move that we approve a request from STARS on Hingham Harbor, Cafe Tosca and Tosca for an extension of New Year's Eve operating hours until 2:00 AM on January 1, 2014.
Second.
Discussion. Have we checked with the chief to make sure that he's comfortable with this?
We have not.
We have not. This is something that has just been done on an annual basis, but I will, if you would like, check with the chief.
All right. Do you want to?
Well-
Go ahead.
You gotta make a vote if they're gonna have it unless you put in a meeting between-
Can we make it subject?
Contingent to-
Contingent upon the approval of the police chief?
Sure.
Can we do it that way? Amended? I'll amend the motion.
So amended?
All right. Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Wait, so we've got to sign 28 pieces of paper?
I already did.
Yippee!
Sharon told me they were there and I- I just, two things I have before I turn it over to my colleagues. As you know, a year or so ago, there was a letter reinforced in March 28th from the Attorney General concerning the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A. And the question that has come up in the confusion is what are the rules under which selectmen need to post meetings in order for one or more of them to attend? The requirement is a lot more stringent than the way it used to be, according to Town Council. And you have in your papers his December letter on the subject of how we should conduct ourselves when we go to- to go to meetings. Simply, the rule is if we're all going, in my opinion, we post it. If we're going in our role as a liaison, the liaison goes and the other selectmen should not be present for one simple reason. According to the Attorney General's interpretation, if one person talks, even though the other one in the other selectman is listening, that constitutes, in the Attorney General's eyes, deliberation. Because one selectman is conveying his or her opinion on a particular issue. Conversely, in order to alleviate that from happening, either both selectmen go and nobody says anything, which we are allowed to do if we go to a meeting just to sit and listen, which is- happens on occasion. Otherwise, if we're having a working meeting, only the liaison should attend, except and if there's an occasion where, let's say, you have overlapping issues, that's something that can be brought to the board and we'll make a motion to get all three of us there. So you can read this at your leisure, but I just wanted to bring that interpretation because it was confusing as to what are the facts in this case. So there's a history of issues on that. The second issue I wanted to just share with you is a meeting I went to with Ted yesterday and it was before the Federal Reserve announced their decision on- as you heard, they've announced two major issues. One, that they are reducing the quantitative easing purchasing of bonds from $85 billion to $75 billion. But one thing they did do is they decided to hold the current effort at short-term interest rates, which is where we have been funding most of our financial efforts. There is a prediction at this meeting we were at, there was a prediction that long-term rates may rise by about 1%. The reason I bring this up is because the decision on all of our cases on a number of matters that'll be coming before us in the next year, should we go short-term, should we go long-term? I thought it was interesting, we were at the meeting before the Federal Reserve announced that this- and nobody predicted short-term rates were moving. It was- everybody said, "Oh, long-term rates are going to move." And then typical of the federal government, they surprised us all and decided to do what they did. As it turns out, that's good for us and I think that's good for us. And the only other concern for- and this is just for information, is the prediction of growth seemed to be around 2% for our future. So that's a- that's a good- that's a good thing. Anyway, I just thought you'd be interested in hearing that. It was well attended. They talked in non-financial terms, so it was very easy to understand. He made it- they made it very simple. Okay, Irma, anything to report?
Just one thing. I want to thank the first responders, police, fire, and the DPW for their performance and their really stick-to-it-iveness during the last two storms. All three groups did a superb job. I was out really early, the morning after the first storm, like before 7:00, and I didn't have a problem in the world.
It was great.
So thank you, thank you to all of them. The scanner was hopping, so police and fire were out in the storm the entire time and they were kept quite busy. So thank you to all, all three groups.
Thank you.
Paul? I was reading the Journal as I customarily do on Thursdays before the meeting and I came across a picture of Keith German with Mr. La Liberty celebrating the fact that his son is home on leave from the Marine Corps. He's holding a blue flag, blue star flag. Steve Bray and Bob Beal presented my wife Esther and I with a blue star flag for our son. And he's home on liberty this Christmas, which I am ecstatic about. There's a list on page five of the Journal of the men that are serving our country in uniform presently. And I would commend the residents of this town to express their appreciation to the families of those soldiers, sailors, and Marines, if you happen to come across them. I've worked my share of holidays as a policeman and I sincerely appreciate the work that the police and fire do during that time when everybody- when most people are customarily enjoying the holiday season. It's tough duty, it's kind of lonely work, and the problems that are accounted are typically exacerbated by the day itself. So I certainly appreciate that work and I thank you for that. We're very fortunate to have, as Irma has said, so well. We've got some solid people here in town. And I'm just grateful for people who serve us in uniform and the people who serve us here in town here as well.
Well-
Good Christmas, everyone.
Well said, well said by everybody. And with that, if I could ask Bob if you would put up Santa one more time. I want to- last- the Hingham Journal and other, like even Little Couldwell, they had a nice spread in the second section of Christmas in the Square. The picture I'll treasure because it will help his reelection campaign is Congressman Steve Lynch sitting on Bob Beal, who is also known as Santa Claus Lap. And it was a nice close-up shot and Steve will get a copy of that. We'll get Bob to autograph it perhaps and send it along. But with that, I want to thank the folks. That was another great Christmas in the Square. It was very well attended and we appreciate that. So with that and the picture of Santa on, I'd like to wish you all a happy holidays on behalf of the board. Happy New Year. We'll be back on January 2nd and to all a very, very Merry Christmas.